Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. May please have an approval of the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And John Akeem, could you please lead us tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance?
All please rise. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Outstanding. And with tonight's announcements, Mr. Dennis Baskin, Dr. Baskin, could you please lead us in tonight's announcements?
Yes ma'am. October 2015 announcements. In November, the Beloit Memorial Theater is performing David Ives, "All in the Tining." The play is a series of comic ventriloos that deal with the concept of time as an abstract. The short scenes examine the possibility and the probability, similar to the movie Groundhog Day, exploring how we spend our time. These scenes are witty and clever, delving into the intricacies of language with plenty of puns and play on words. The show will be held at Beloit Memorial Auditorium at 7:30 PM on November 6th, 7th, 13th, 14th, and at 2:30 PM on November 15th. Tickets are $7 for adults and $4 for students and senior citizens. The Beloit Memorial High School Jazz Band I is traveling to San Francisco this Friday, October 30th, to perform at a private event. The band was selected for this incredible opportunity based on their exceptional 2015 essentially elated performance in New York City last May. We congratulate them for the recognition and wish them continued success. This concludes the October announcements.
Thank you. We are now at the point on the agenda for recognitions. Melissa, could you please join us at the podium, please?
Thank you. We have some great recognitions tonight. We are actually going to start with our outstanding staff. So I'd like to begin with Brandy Hereford. And she's, we'll start with Stephanie Jacobs. Has her recognition, along with her honoree tonight, Dave Gary.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, I have to get my readers on. Oh, they're not helping a lot. Okay. Dave Gary, I am proud to be here tonight to recognize Dave Gary, our head custodian at Converse. You actually might have read about him recently in the Beloit Daily News. The school honored Dave by all of us dressing staff and students like Dave to show him our appreciation for National Custodian Day. He is, Mr. Gary is tireless in his dedication to Converse. He's always making sure that our building is clean, safe, and comfortable for students, staff, and visitors. Dave goes way beyond, above and beyond what is expected of him. He always goes the extra mile. For example, one day last year, and he's already done it this year, but now I'm on to him. One day as I was working in my office, I noticed a movement out of the corner of my eye, and I looked out my window, and there was Dave washing the outside of my window, smiling at me and waving. And I thought, wow, that's pretty cool. He's outside washing the outside of the windows, too. We see him inside a lot, washing as well. When we had visitors last year from other school districts, one of the comments was always how clean our building was, how our floors shined, how clean the walls are. Besides Dave's strong work ethic, he excels in another area, his relationships with our students, parents, and staff. Everyone knows Dave. He is there to tie a child's shoe, welcome a new family, or help a staff member. He really has one of the biggest hearts that I've ever seen. He truly would give you the shirt off of his back. These are just a few of the many things that make Dave so special to us at Converse. He is an integral part of our Converse family and so deserving of this award.
Thank you. There's only one little thing I'd like to say is that working at Converse has been really a great place to be. In the paper, I was called Martha Stewart, but there was also a gentleman here that helped train me, and we used to call him Aunt Bee. And that's Mr. Wolfle, if you could please stand up. So it's been a, it's been a great, great place to work, but the thing is with the Converse staff, with the teachers, and our great principal, is the way they help maintain the kids so that I can help maintain the building. So their PBIS program that they're doing is phenomenal. You need to come see it, come see how they do what they do with the kids to help keep the building clean. And I could not do it without what they do, and also with my night staff also. We cannot forget about the other people that helped me out in the building. So it's not just me, it's correlation to everybody, and that includes our teaching staff and our great principal. So thank you.
And I have the honor of getting to present this certificate of appreciation on behalf of the School District of Beloit and the Board of Education to Dave Gary in recognition of professionalism, caring, leadership in learning, and dedication to education and well-being of the students, and visitors, and family, and so many others I hear about for the School District of Beloit. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Mr. Gary, I also want to say thank you on behalf of the Board of Education. I have to say that when we, as a safety committee, toured your building, you were spot-on there correcting as we went. And you made it very difficult to cite any safety observed hazards because you were adamant about correcting them before they could even show up in the report. So thank you for attention to detail and for being extremely responsive beyond what the expectations could ever have even equated to. So thank you so much.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have another outstanding staff member here tonight, so I'd like to ask our Gaston Principal, Brandy Hereford, and her honoree, Deb Taylor, to please join me.
Hi, my name is Brandy Hereford, and I'm the principal at Gaston Elementary School. And today I brought a staff member with me, and her name is Deb Taylor. Deb Taylor always goes the extra mile. For the short moment that I've known her, she's always done something that does not require any extra money, any, anything. One night, I actually attended with my kids an event that she decided to do with the first grade called Starry Night. And so we actually had first grade families come in, and we had iPads, and we were outside looking at the stars with our iPads, you know? And so that's just one of those things that Deb does, and that was one of the first things that I actually encountered when I first met her. So this year, she has actually amazed me, and I've changed her into a superhero. So I made her this shirt that says, "I teach first grade, what's your superpower?" For several reasons. So the first thing that she actually did is she's, she's good with her colleagues, she's really good with her first grade team, and she also wants to make Gaston a community. So she's even offered us to come to her house. So she's really, you know, good about that with the committee and trying to make sure that we're a family as a staff, too, as well as with the students. The most recent thing that I've seen Deb do, actually, she has worked in the district for 15 years, and right now she co-teaches in a classroom with 37 students. And so we actually had several other students, and I've seen Deb do a read aloud to 40 students and have them all engaged. Forty kids sitting on the rug. Again, superhero. Like, I'm getting goosebumps when I sit in there, watching the way that her and her co-teacher move. They are, they're really in sync, and I would encourage you to come see them teach guided reading, guided math. The way these kids move in a room, you would think there were 15 of them in there, but there are actually 37. So Deb's my superhero. So congratulations, Deb. Thank you for going the extra mile.
Never been a superhero before. Thank you very much. And, you know, I was at a conference once, and I remember the presenter saying that teachers are notorious for saying, "Oh, no, it's nothing, it's okay. No, that's just part of the job, it's all this and that." And, and, and very much that's true. But it also comes with a whole lot of support, a support from my administrator. It's just really, I've never had a bad administrator I've ever worked with. Always supportive, always behind me, knowing they've got my back. I'm very proud of the board that we have here at the School District. I always felt supported that you've had my back, that I feel like if something happened, that I'd have somebody there to, to help me out. And even more so the staff. And I mean the staff. I mean teachers, and the pares, and the, and the lunch people, and the custodians, and everybody. There is nobody in that building that I have been blessed, and I've been there the entire, my whole career, where you've never had anybody who hasn't helped you. In order to do what we do in the classroom, we've got to have that support, we've got to have that knowing somebody's behind me, and that the door is open for us to proceed forward. And I've been given the freedom to proceed forward, and I've had the satisfaction, not the satisfaction, the comfort of knowing that I've got people behind me. So I thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Now to go along with your superhero shirt, we have a super certificate for you in recognition of your professionalism, your caring, your leadership in learning, and dedication to the education and well-being of the students in the School District of Beloit. Staff are really what make it here in the district, and you can definitely see why. Our next recognition, I'm actually going to call Stephanie Jacobs, principal at Converse, again back up here, for a school-wide honor. Converse Elementary School was once again named a Wisconsin Spotlight School by the State's Department of Public Instruction. This means that Converse is such a success that the state will promote it to other state school districts as a school to emulate. Part of the honor is receiving a grant to help pay for hosting costs associated with having district teams come to visit Beloit. And I know that you will do a good job, as always.
Well, am I still doing my little report later? Yes, I, I can tell you more about it in a moment, but on behalf of the school of Converse, the entire staff, we thank you for this honor. We are truly a team in our building, and we're truly a family away from our real families. And I really believe that's what makes our school so successful. Thank you.
Something to share with your staff back at Converse in recognition of professional dedication and collaboration in achieving student success leading to Spotlight School honors from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. Two years running. Nice job.
Thank you, Melissa. Congratulations, everybody. And we are now at the point on the agenda for citizens or delegation that could speak to any area of interest that is not included on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody that would like to speak to an item or an area of interest that is not on tonight's agenda? If so, I would ask that you please rise and move to the podium at this time. Again, is there anybody that would like to speak to an item or an area of interest that is not posted on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, let's move forward then with the superintendent's report to the board. First, I would like to give my sincere apologies. Dr. Johnson has been battling the flu, a really, really bad version of the flu, and he's not there, and he is not able to be with us this evening. However, his report to the board is one that we shall not wait in anticipation for another month because it is, as we just had alluded to, a further update on Converse a Spotlight School with Principal Jacobs. So I would ask that Ms. Jacobs, please rise and join us at the podium so that we can hear a little bit more about Converse as a Spotlight School, please. And I have to say, as Ms. Jacobs rises to the podium, I think there's something special about cat-loving people. And that may have something to do with why we're a Spotlight School. Just, no. Welcome, and as a fellow cat lover, I appreciate you for who you are. And yes, I'm a crazy cat lady, and she might be one, too.
I, I am. How many are you at? I forgot now.
We're on television, so I will tell you three.
Oh, yes, of course. That's how many I have as well. I brought Diane Meyer, who is our Spotlight Coordinator, who does all of the heavy lifting with our Spotlight Grant. And last time I was here, I had some issues with the computer, so Diane, even though we are the same age, Diane is my mentor in many ways. So without further ado, we'll just give you a brief synopsis of what a Spotlight School is for those of you who are new to the board. So the Spotlight School, this program has been developed to provide information to schools around the state about effective practices in improving student learning and achievement, and allow school teams to arrange visits to the different Spotlight Schools, both new and continuing, to observe these practices and implement these ideas in their own schools. Our journey to becoming a Spotlight School, beginning in 2011 and 2012, was our first year of becoming a Wisconsin School of Recognition. We were fortunate to become one the following year, and then the year after. By the spring of 2014, we were invited by DPI to apply for the Spotlight Grant. It was my first attempt at grant writing, and a special thank you to Angie Montpass because she helped a great deal. Grant writing, I know why I had never written one now. They're interesting. In June of 2014, great news, we were accepted for the grant, and 2014, 2015 was our first year of Spotlight visits. We also received the Wisconsin School of Recognition once again in order to become a, is that coming up, Diane? You have to be, okay, I'll just be quiet. And then we accepted the grant, and now this year we are on our second year of Spotlight Last year's visits started in March. We moved them right through, we're starting a little slower this year. March 6th, Palmyra Elementary came and visited, visited us. On March 11th, Albright Elementary from Broadhead came. On April 8th, Fauk Elementary from Madison visited, and we only have to do three, but we got four in, visits. And April 17th, Windsor Elementary came, DeForest Elementary, Yahara Elementary, the Windsor-DeForest School District area. So we had principals from the different schools that actually came, along with some Some of our Spotlight, well, these are our Spotlight practices. When you write the grant, you choose a certain area, and ours is data and accountability. So these are some of the things that we highlight. We do student intervention team meetings, grade level PLCs, different tools utilized at Converse in collecting and analyzing data, our tiered reading interventions, our level literacy instruction and sort of success is a big one that the people like to come and, and see. Just our universal literacy curriculum, development of our essential learning targets in literacy and math, Angie comes and gives an awesome presentation to each visiting school on that. Co-taught classrooms, technology integration, our one-to-one iPads, which people always love to see. Thank you so much for those iPads. They're phenomenal. Our full-day 4K program, and Lucy Cawkins Writer's Workshop. And these are just a few quotes from some of the visits at the end of every visit. The host school asks the visiting school to just fill out a brief questionnaire about what they did, or, you know, would have liked to have seen that type of thing. And these comments go to DPI. And someone from Fauk Elementary wrote, "I don't enjoy being away from my own classroom. However, I am so glad I came for this school visit. It was exciting to see various groups of children as they worked at such a high level of engaged activity with committed and caring adults. All adults shared the same level of teamwork toward helping students reach academic goals, and many staff said they really enjoyed working at Converse School. During lunch, it was enjoyable to sit down, relax, talk, and compare notes with other teachers about their work." This is a very dedicated group of teachers. And Sarah Williford, who used to work for the district, wrote, "A few years ago, I attended a similar training at Adelie E. Stevenson High School," which is where this all originated, the PLCs. "Looking back, I have to admit that I took away more practical and useful information yesterday than I did from a school that ranks in the top 10 schools in the state of Illinois. The PLC I saw at Adelie Stevenson paled in comparison to Converse Elementary. Thank you for the opportunity to visit." And Kathy Lingus from DPI wrote to Diane and I this fall, "Good afternoon, Stephanie and Diane. Heidi, Mary, Jo, and I," two other women that came for our, they do a practice, a mock Spotlight Visit. "Heidi, Mary, Jo, and I would like to thank you for hosting us at Converse yesterday. We appreciated the time you spent with us and your careful preparation before we arrived. Please also thank the teachers who allowed us to observe them and the central office staff, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Williams, Mr. Bonds, and Ms. Pont, Ms. Pontpass, who joined us. The supportive working relationship you have established with your central office staff was evident, and your partnership clearly benefits the students and staff at Converse. The demonstration of the positive district-school relationship you have established, the teamwork between the two of you, and the teacher teams that participated confirm the value, value, excuse me, of collaboration and working toward shared common goals. Converse's positive school culture was clearly evident." And this is just a picture of us working together in our beautiful new conference room. Thank you to the entire city of Beloit for passing that referendum. Our building is gorgeous, and this is one of our team classrooms that, that has been renovated. I'm speaking with the principal from Albright Elementary School. And I do want to take just a quick moment again to thank Diane because she does a tremendous amount of work, and she truly is a teacher leader. Are there any questions?
Are there questions from board members? John Akeem, please.
I'll offer a comment. I think that the fact that, well, first of all, there's something inside of me that really appreciates the fact that a school from Madison, Wisconsin, is coming to Beloit to learn how to better be a better school. I think that is just fantastic. There's something inside of me that just really responds very well to that. But in addition to that, I, I just want to say that this is a great example of the fact that this really is an extraordinary school district with extraordinary people and extraordinary schools in it. And I think sometimes with familiarity, because we're so close, we don't fully understand or appreciate that ourselves. And it's stuff, discussions like tonight and presentations like tonight help us to remind us that, hey, you know, we really got a lot of great things going here in Beloit, and we're proud of it.
Thank you, John. And I don't have a question, so you're off the hot seat tonight, but I do have a thank you for you, your staff, and parents, and students. When we talk about Spotlight Schools, we think about the word spotlight, and what spotlight means is really we're taking that bright light and we're shining down on it. And we're shining down on it because it's something to be recognized, to be upheld, and to behold. And not because of any other reason than it's such a positive, resounding, shining example of what we are when we say Beloit Proud. So thank you to everybody that has made Converse a Spotlight School. Thank you to everybody that continues to make it a Spotlight School, and thank you to everyone who has allowed it to be a shining star and to say that we're Beloit Proud at Converse. Because we are Beloit Proud universally, and we're Beloit Proud at Converse. So thank you both. Continuing on with reports to the board, we are now at Student Board Member Report, which I anxiously am awaiting this evening, so I'll turn it over to you, too.
As to wrap up the month of October, we're right, currently we're in midterm week, so like we're taking tests, well, not AP tests, but we're all taking finals and stuff, getting ready for November. November 9th is girls' basketball tryouts, hockey tryouts for boys and girls. November 16th is boys swim, wrestling, and boys basketball. So that's all that I have to report for.
Well, I would say a hot topic as of, as of late is the discussion of new schedule. Recently, there was a meeting here, the Bale Schedule Committee, that included myself and the heads of staff, so head of cores. And we had got some good points, and at the staff meeting, next Tuesday, maybe in two weeks, November 10th, we are going to introduce stage one of the new schedule. Also, for the students' concerns, we are also having a student forum on Thursday, November 12th. At the meeting, I represented student interests, and me being a senior, it was hard, but we're going to find out more, and I'm going to advocate for the students, along with a few more students as well. So, yeah. That's what I had to report on. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you both. I have to be honest, and I have not heard of anything of the new schedule thus yet, until tonight. So are there any highlights that you, you're willing to share, or should we just stay tuned for more information?
Well, we, Dr. Salzman and I, and I think Mr. Appleton, another assistant principal, we should have a trial run that we are going to present to the board in the coming months. So it should be, should be exciting, I know that.
Well, we shall stay tuned, and I think we're all anxiously awaiting. And I see Lori with her finger up and question-ready as well.
No question. I just had the pleasure of attending the same meeting, and it was fun to listen to the amount of collaboration and the, the great ideas that came out of that meeting. So look forward to watching you guys do more, and especially getting that student feedback because I think that's a huge piece. So nice job, it was good to see you there. Keep going.
Outstanding. Thank you, everybody. Are there any further questions for our student representatives? Seeing none, thank you both. Let's move forward then to committee reports. First up, we have John Winkelman, Finance, Transportation, and Property Committee, please.
Thank you, Shannon. I'll be brief. We, just some quick highlights on finance transportation, October 13th. We talked about ABM, Bassett Mechanical Maintenance Services, a nice review of what they're doing for us, how it's working, with some opportunity for questions and, and ideas. We heard some very good things happening, and some ideas that are yet to come. We talked about or moved forward a 60-fun activity group, so student groups have to be approved through the board, their activity fund budgets. So those will come for us, I think, tonight. We had to waiver rental fees, one for the Beloit Elks, one for the Special Olympics. And then we spent quite a bit of time talking about the preliminary budget and the energy-efficient project planning, and we did a lot of that tonight. So it was a good productive warm-up for us as we were able to have a good discussion then tonight. That's what we did.
Questions or comments for John? Seeing none, let's move forward then with Curriculum and Instruction. John Akeem, please.
The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on October the 13th, and we, we looked at the Youth Options Program for the second semester. Youth Options, again, is a program wherein our students are able to take courses not offered at our school, at college, either at Urock, or at Beloit College, or at Blackhawk Tech. And so we looked at those and then approved it in a separate meeting earlier this evening. The majority of our, of our meeting was spent, we have a new curriculum director, Mr. Anthony Bonds, he's coming to us with a lot of ideas. We have a few- Anthony Bonds, uh, he's coming to us with a lot of ideas, uh, we have a few ideas of our own, and so, what we wanted to do was begin a conversation, it's gonna last all year, uh, about, uh, what we're doing right, what we can do better, how we can do it better, what we can do differently, and so on and so forth, touching on a variety of things. We've got a, a much more of a full agenda for the, uh, for the coming school year in terms of things we're going to discuss. We're gonna be talking about everything from, uh, from summer school, uh, to, uh, how we communicate with our parents, we're gonna talk about truancy, we're gonna talk about that schedule over at the high school, too, at some point. And, uh, so, it's, it's going to be a rich, exciting year. We're happy to be working, we're excited to be working with, uh, with Mr. Bonds, and, uh, it's gonna be a good one, and we're looking forward to it, and that's what the Curriculum Committee's up to.
Questions or comments for John? Seeing none, let's roll into Policy and Personnel with Nora, please.
The Policy and Personnel Committee met on September 22nd, be prior, just prior to the business meeting, to approve personnel recommendations, and we meet just prior to the business meeting for that purpose every business meeting. The next meeting we had was also on October 13th, and from that meeting, we discussed a number of policies that will be coming to us tonight that are first readings, and they include specific graduation requirements, um, use of controversial instructional media, equal access, affirmative action, code of conduct, and discipline, and then for a second reading, we have temporary administrative, uh, arrangements. Going back to those first policies, um, the one on the, uh, graduation policy, uh, updates, it was updated because of Act 65, uh, Act, Act 55 in the 2015 biennium budget, and basically, what we need to do is to have our graduating students now pass a civil rights test, and they need to get 60% of that test correct, so we had to update our, our policy there. And then, on the, uh, country, controversial, um, instructional media policy, we just kind of condensed the, the language to make it, uh, a little, uh, more concise. Some of these policies are 20 years old, so we've been looking at them, just kind of putting them into how we practice them now. Equal access and, uh, affirmative action were, were along those lines as well. The code of conduct and discipline, uh, updates, um, the changes were prompted by, um, policy changes to the Office of Civil Rights, and so, some of the areas of that 12-page, um, policy on the code of conduct that were modified or changed had to do with assaults and robbery and the use of firearms. Broadly speaking, there are, um, several areas within that policy where those, uh, topics have been, uh, modified. But again, it was prompted to be updated, uh, because of changes to the policy by the Office of Civil Rights. Then, uh, the temporary administrative, uh, arrangements, which is the second reading, uh, the, the simple changes there were, um, names of individuals. For instance, we now have a superintendent of operations, and there was an old title there, so we just updated our titles. That's it for our policies. Um, we had personnel recommendations, as we always do, and then we had, um, a legislative update by Mr. Aiken, who's been doing a wonderful job keeping us informed of what's going on in Madison. Um, and what he brought to our attention were some, um, uh, what did he say? He said, what? Bathroom. I wasn't sure if I was gonna mention that, but yes, bathroom issues were one of the legislative matters that, uh, were discussed, and, uh, I guess the state legislator, legislators are, are kind, were kind of looking, I don't know if they still are, looking at gender identity and bathroom use. But there seems to be some conflict with federal legislation, so it may, or, it, it may not go very far. Um, and then, uh, Mr. Aiken brought forward that school, but, school board members, um, uh, it, there is, uh, some legislation that's going to be crafted, or is in the process of being crafted, that school board members may serve as coaches in school districts. And then also, he, um, brought, uh, to our attention the legislative information regarding the filling of school board vacancies, and basically, it, it, it pertains to the seen, uh, district's inability to fill a vacancy. So, he always brings, uh, some, uh, nice tidbits our way, thank you. Future items that we will, uh, be looking at are, again, just to update old policies, making the wording a little more concise. Um, and as I said, a couple of them tonight are 20 years old since they've been looked at. Um, when they are policies that really pertain to, uh, more serious business, we do have, um, in place, uh, updating our policies every two or three years, or when there are changes in legislation that prompt us to change our policy. So, I, I would like all those who are hearing what I have to say, that there aren't a lot of our policies that are 20 years old that we, uh, don't address. So, that's my report.
Thank you, Nora. Are there questions or comments for Nora?
Just a quick question.
Yes, John.
Graduation requirements on citizenship, right?
On citizenship. So, to take the, yes. I was reading, and it wasn't in the notes there, yes.
Thank you. Next up, we have consent list.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second, a discussion. Janelle, I know you've had a long night, but could you possibly answer a few questions for me? So, as I was looking at items on the consent list, most specific approval of August financial summary, a few things stuck out to me, in the fact, um, what most stuck out was that some, that we're two months into our budget, correct? This only includes July and August.
Correct.
And in some areas, we are at 78% of budget for the year, 61. For other employee category 290, we're at 135.7% of budget, and I'm wondering if you could speak to specific on that, how can we be over expenditures for the year by over 36% two months into it? It's gotta be an anomaly for some reason.
Are you talking about object 290, other employee?
Exactly, yep.
Yeah, I, um, the reason would be that, um, we had something that wasn't in the anticipated budget come up.
Okay.
That we would need to come back for adjustments.
And then the other items that kind of, I mean, there's several on here, but the other one that kind of jumped out at me were capital leases, so if we look at 678 and 688, we're at 62% and 79% year-to-date with two months in. Are we prepaying leases? Is that why?
No, no, that's because of the due dates, when they come due, when the payments come due.
Okay.
So, there's different timing. So, we had a July payment for our Ignite Beloit or, uh, one-to-one program lease, and, um, there's other leases out there, payments we have to make.
So, when we look at the budget that we approved tonight, and we look at the numbers, we're not feeling as if we have not budgeted enough, knowing that we're 80% and 62% in. We just know that based on the dates of the leases, we're properly budgeted, it just will be askew till we get a few more months under our belt.
Correct. It's just about timing, and the other employee category is just a very difficult area to budget.
Understood. Outstanding. Thank you so much for answering those. That helps a lot for me. Are there any other questions on any items under the consent list? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We are now at business action item, Scott Forge, donation, please. This is for a video to be produced, and Scott Forge is helping fund that video to, um, promote our technical education department.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
With thanks.
Very much so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. 60-fun student activity groups, please.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. John Aiken, please.
There's a new one in here this year that I just wanna, wanna highlight a little bit. At the high school, we have a new, uh, organization, Future Teachers of America, and this is part of our effort to, uh, grow our own teachers. Uh, so, we're trying to get our high school folk who wanna be teachers, interested in being teachers, understand what it takes to be a teacher, and, yeah, I understand that they're facing teachers every day in the classroom, but, uh, looking at it through the other end of the telescope, uh, will hopefully prove interesting, encourage our high school students, uh, who are interested, to go on to, uh, college where they can, uh, get a teaching certificate, and then come back here to Beloit, come back home, and, and, and be, and be a part of our school district. Uh, we think it's important, uh, this, uh, whole grow-your-own idea, and we're very excited about it, and this new organization in the high school is one piece of that.
Thank you, John. Others? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We're at Youth Options for second semester 2015, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Question for Curriculum Committee, I did see that, um, one of the items on here, and thank you for perusing this and giving it due diligence. The one that stood out to me was Introduction to Psychology at UW Rock County, and it says not an 80% match. Is that not the same as our psychology, or our AP Psychology that's offered at the high school?
I can't answer that for certain, but my, my belief it would be that there is sufficient difference, uh, so that it would not be an 80% match. There were some other psychology, psychology courses as well, uh, a Psychology of Women course, for example, uh, at Beloit College was offered. So, there are several different forays into, into psychology, and, uh, but in terms of that particular one, uh, we did not ask that particular question as to whether or not, again, we don't necessarily sit down with the entire coursebooks and, and compare.
So, I guess what I would ask the Curriculum Committee, if indeed, the Introduction to Psychology is an 80% match within our psychology general class or our AP Psychology, at that point, when it's determined, could that not be approved going forward, or if we prove it this evening, and is it authorized?
Yeah, we could certainly raise the issue, and, uh, again, I think the people that administer, that administer this are, are very conscientious about those things, so we can certainly raise the issue, and I will, uh, raise the issue by email tomorrow.
Excellent.
The other thing, too, is to keep in mind that, uh, as we've learned, uh, over the years, not every one of these courses gets taken, not every one of these dollars gets spent, uh, because of schedule conflicts and because, uh, first priority is given to the college students, so a course may be full. So, many of these courses, the kids, it doesn't actually happen for the kids, so, uh, we always keep that in mind, but we approve it, so they got the opportunity to, to go ahead and do it, if in fact, it's gonna work.
Excellent. Thank you, John. Thank you for raising that, um, via email as well.
I have a quick, I have a comment.
Yes.
Which is, if you notice, um, so, I don't know how to tell you what page is on, but some of these are denied when they are an 80% match.
Correct.
So, they are being checked, so it's not as though the, the likelihood of that intro class in psychology being checked is pretty high, but, good question.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. And we are now at policy 345.1, Rule 1, specific graduation requirements for first reading, and this is the addition of the civics test as mandated by statute.
Move approval for all first policy, uh, first reading policies. Policy 345.1, Rule 1, that's E. Policy 381, use of controversial instructional media, that's F. G is 371.1, equal access, and H is Policy 511, affirmative action, and I is 443 slash 447, code of conduct and discipline.
Second.
Discussion? John Aiken, please.
Again, very quickly, I just wanna highlight something, uh, in the, uh, affirmative action policy, uh, page 70 of your brochure. Uh, one of the things that's been added in is the whole concept of retention of our teachers. We are looking very hard right now, as a school district, not only at stepping up our recruitment processes and, uh, going and recruiting in places that we haven't gone recently for a variety of good reasons, but we also understand that we wanna, that we need to put more emphasis on, after we recruited great teachers, keeping them here. And so, we wanna look at retention policies as well as recruitment policies. We are doing so, and, uh, that's an important piece of, of the puzzle, as, as we try to, uh, improve and diversify our teaching workforce.
Thank you, John, for the discussion. Seeing, Nora?
Um, I probably should've brought this up, but I just would like to read the last, um, update in the, that policy, just, uh, one sentence to kind of coincide with what John said, and it says, "We will have a staff that reflects the racial and cultural diversity of our community and our student body, and we will build a trusting, build trusting relationships with all students and their families, establishing our district as a recognized leader of equitable community engagement." So, um, we did add some language to reflect what we would like our district to look like and, and, uh, how we would like to use the affirmative action policy.
Thank you, Nora. Anybody else? Lisa, please.
I just have a minor comment about the civics test requirement. Now, many of you have already heard me comment on this, that I find it to be, um, the timing suspicious, given the national climate with, um, what I perceive to be an anti-immigrant sort of, um, climate, and I would, even though this is statute, I wanna register, um, my dissatisfaction that we even have to do it, because it doesn't add to the student's experience, and I think it serves to, um, point out the, the, uh, kinda legal status or immigrant status of people unnecessarily.
Thank you, Lisa. Dr. Bassett?
I support your comments 100%, Dr. Anderson Levy. I feel the same way as well.
Any further comments or concerns, questions, or otherwise? Seeing none, moving forward, all items for first reading with this motion, all those by saying aye?
Aye.
And those opposed?
Madam President, we need to extend the meeting by a few minutes to get us through. I'll make that motion. We're past nine o'clock.
I'll second it.
Thank you, John, and John, for motion, and this is, and let the record note, this is the first time in a very long time we've had to extend the meeting.
You have, oh, you had a budget hearing before. You have full dispensation.
Thank you, John. So, all those in favor of extending the business meeting by a few minutes, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you. We're at item J, policy, did we vote? Michelle, did we just vote on that? We did, right? Yes, thank you. Just first readings, yes. Woo!
I move approval of policy 270.
270.
To give the President a second here to catch your breath.
Second.
Thank you, and this is for second reading. This is policy 270, temporary administrative arrangements. Essentially, what this policy does is it transcribes who shall be, um, who, who shall sit in this chair when our superintendent is not able to do so due to illness or other commitments. Pretty straightforward policy, folks. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. We are now personnel recommendations, please, re, uh, refer to the revised or updated Exhibit A dated 10/27/15, that was at our stations when we came in this evening. Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We're now items for discussion. Are there any items of interest for consideration at future meetings? Seeing none, announcements of future board meetings. We have committee meetings coming up on November the 10th, that shall include Finance, Transportation, and Property, Curriculum and Instruction, Policy and Personnel, and our next televised business meeting is November 24th. We also have a meeting next Thursday, which is, we will be entertaining or, um, working in collaboration with the, uh, with the ad hoc diversity committee, with the recommendations that we approved in our last business meeting. Um, so that meeting will be held next Thursday, and I believe it's either gonna be in Superintendent's Room 106, or this room, depending, um, in a much different format, with very comfortable chairs, depending on room available, um, for that. And Michelle, is that starting at 5:30? Is that correct? At five o'clock, five o'clock next Thursday. Um, those are the
Madam President?
...board meetings that are coming up, and with that, John Aiken, yes.
Are we reconvening after this meeting?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. We are, we-
For the benefit of our television audience, we're not gonna be home right away.
Yes. Um, so that Ms. Aiken knows, we did recess from our previous meeting, and we will be reconvening in that meeting immediately following the adjournment of this meeting. Um, is that what you needed, John?
Yes.
All right, very good. All right. So, unless there are any objections at this point, folks, we shall be adjourned. We are adjourned, and I'll see you back in Room 106. We are adjourned, and I'll see you back in Room 106.